One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I'm gonna go a little out of order. We're gonna take Kathy Lynch from ECAT.
How are y'all doing?
I gotta get better initials than ECAT. You're up Kathy.
Okay, do you guys have the proposal in front of you?
We do.
I mean, it's basically the same proposal as last time with some modified numbers. And what you had asked us to do was to solidify the numbers and take out the ranges, which is what I did.
Can you hit the high points?
Yeah, I mean, the high points are pretty much... As a summary, if Southampton decided to enable its cable access and merge with ECAT, so it'll be Southampton and East Hampton cable access television, then what you would basically get for very small cost is eight to 12 hours of programming a day on your Channel 5. You would have any government meetings you wanted taped rebroadcast so that people could watch them on the channel. You would have a much better community calendar that can be updated remotely, so that means it has a web interface. And you could utilize it in different ways. That would be up to you guys. But other town departments can have usernames and passwords that they could put things up. So for example, if the highway department was plowing Smith Street, or I'm just making up a random name, they could put that Wednesday night there's no parking on Smith Street, that the highway department's doing something. They can just do that if they wanted to. Or whatever, there's a parking ban. In fact, the police could use it to say, you know, there's such and such an emergency right now. The school system could use it to announce what school lunches are, or for snow cancellations, all that good stuff. And you would get public access, which is the honoring the free speech right of your citizens to make videos and put them on a local channel. You would get a staff contact person.
Is that a right to have access to a local channel?
Uh, yeah, it is.
It's in the Constitution.
It's not in the Constitution. You're free... But the... Your First Amendment is upheld and there's an argument made, which is why public access was started to begin with. You would have a free technical consultant for any equipment expansions that you wanted, any improvements that you wanted to make to your current setup. You could have expanded government access if you wanted it. And you could have educational access, so there could be educational programming running on the channel as well. I mean, those are the highlights. So I guess at this point, all I need to know from the board is if the board could vote and decide to either move forward and construct a relationship or not move forward.
So I have a couple of questions.
There you go.
Hi.
So eight to 12 hours of program each day, what does that mean?
Shows on television on Channel 5 in Southampton, showing in Southampton.
And what type of shows are those? What would the public say?
We have a really broad base of programming. So in the past, we've invited the select board to go to our website and look at some of our programming. We have medical shows, we have law shows, we have citizen action shows, we have a lot of other local shows that are submitted from other communities. We generate our own shows. We have an art show right now called In Studio that goes around and interviews artists in their studio and tells what their upcoming show is that is put out by ECA Plus. You know, we had a mayor show. We may have a new mayor show.
Might have a Mike show or something like that.
You could have a Mike show. You could have a Mike Phelan show. I mean, any of that stuff is possible. It's whatever the person... Whatever the producer wants to do.
And you talk about rebroadcasting and software gains. And there is a cost to this.
Yeah.
What are we talking about? Is there increased costs or...
Well...
Or is it just sort of plugged into the format at 2:00 AM in the morning, you'll see the latest software? I mean, how does...
No, it doesn't. So what... So in a nutshell, what we're proposing is instead of Southampton doing this, 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 and this piecemeal, is to make it an official relationship where you would contract us to run your public access, to run your public access. That includes PEG access, which is public, educational, and government. So for example, if this...
Is there a limit on how many rebroadcasts? Is there a cost of like the number of rebroadcasts?
No, there's no cost for rebroadcasting. Basically, what you're looking at is we currently own the infrastructure and it would be a really simple merger, technical merger. We... Southampton and East Hampton are both in the Charter Cable Service. Southampton and East Hampton share the same subhub. We have the fiber that already comes into our building. So what we're asking the town to do is invest in a little bit of the infrastructure, which is under capital costs, which I think is item... Line item 14, which is a TXRX receiver pair.
Would that be installed here or there?
It would be installed in the studio, because what we could do is take these meetings and code them into our server, and then they can be scheduled and rebroadcast.
So when you're talking... When you talk about the community calendar, is there a specific person in like East Hampton that sort of manages that?
Yes. Tim Riley, actually.
So we would probably need to get someone to do that for us, or would Tim do that for us?
Well, what I'm proposing is that if you merge with us, we would take over that responsibility.
So Tim would be the contact person?
Tim would be the contact person. We already have an email that's set up for you guys.
And for the notices, does East Hampton use it as an official notice now that... So if someone parks in the street and you say there's a parking van, that it's a legal official notice that is on cable TV even though they may not get cable access?
It's not a legal official notice. It's just a more efficient way to disseminate information.
Okay. And then when you talked about public access? So from my understanding from the public access and what the statute is under, is that anyone would basically put anything on these channels?
Well, there are guidelines.
There are guidelines. I mean, there's the, you know...
Right. There's community standards, right.
But anyone could walk in basically and produce a show or advertise something, run for office or something like that, but actually put something on there.
Right.
That's okay. But you don't need to be involved in that?
Not necessarily.
That's already sort of there. It's part of the...
It's available. It's available.
And then when you talk about a staff contact person, would that be Tim again? Or Tim?
No, what we would do is if Southampton contracted with us, we would hire a Southampton coordinator.
So maybe someone on a senior citizen or something like that. What is... What do you mean by expanded government access if wanted to?
So for example, if you wanted to start videotaping your town meetings.
Then how much would that be per show?
It wouldn't... There wouldn't be no per show cost. It would be written into the contract that that is a part of what... An obligation that we fill.
What are we paying now for per show?
What do we pay?
$120.
$120 per meeting.
And what's that for a year right now?
Well, we were supposed to be 24 meetings or 25 meetings, but we've been running 52 meetings.
Yep.
So is there a surcharge because you rolled to 24?
There's no surcharge. You're just invoiced for that time.
You're just... We're banging out the $120 a week.
So are we cruising around?
It's $6,240 for the year.
We're above that at this point. We're getting closer to 10 grand, I would assume, if we're double that, because we just... That was what the original was, but now we're doing 50 a year.
That's 52. That's 52 meetings.
Yeah, I think we budgeted it on the 50. We budgeted it on...
We budgeted 50, so it's not gonna change the line that much.
No, I guess the question becomes, what does it cost us now for our cable access?
It costs you... You pay for things piecemeal. So because we're not... We're... You use us like a subcontractor. So if you want us to come do a meeting, it costs you $120.
So that's the $6,000.
That's what that breakdown was.
If we join or we merge with East Hampton, what's it gonna cost us?
It's gonna cost you $16,000 a year, and that includes a staff person and all the other funds.
So roughly $10,000 more than what we paid. We budgeted in the past.
Right.
That therein lies the question. Do we wanna...
How much do we generate on an annual basis from this PEG fee?
You generate in excess of $16,000. I think it's in...
It is. 2011 was $17,823. 2012 was $18,271. We have not received $2013.
So when you invite gross revenue received for them, you pay them?
No, that you receive from cable revenue.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, that's that one percent.
So the money that's used to pay Channel 5, East Hampton, to cover these meetings doesn't come out of the tax coffers.
No.
It comes out of the cable access money, which is the part of the 1% retention of the gross revenue that the cable company pays to the town and the town holds. The town cannot use that money for anything else.
But that money comes out of the taxpayers' pockets who have cable, right?
Well, no, it doesn't come out of the... Well...
Because it goes to the charter's money.
I guess it's a...
It comes from the cable subscribers.
Yeah, it comes from the cable subscribers.
So it does to the town.
Whether those cable subscribers pay taxes or not is a different...
And if we don't use that, where does that money go to? Does that go to you guys?
It just sits there. And then when you... The purpose is that if you don't spend that money, you're gonna have a cable contract renewal process coming up soon, you're not gonna really be able to make an argument to get any more money, because you didn't spend the money you got.
But having some money, though, like, is just lost out there?
Yeah.
Looking at this, we're still responsible for any replacement and repairs of any of the existing equipment here.
The equipment you own, so yes.
But we're still responsible to maintain, replace, or repair any of that.
Yes, yes.
That's not part of your operation.
They're just giving service and nothing.
So if we used all our money to pay for your contract to run this on an annual basis, we have nothing to cover replacement costs.
That shouldn't be the case, because you get capital money and then you get yearly money.
Oh, okay. How much capital money do we get?
We have $5,000 per year, so we receive $25,000.
What do we have on it?
Purchased equipment.
What if we don't spend it, where does it go?
Cameras.
What if we don't spend it, where does it go?
It just stays there.
So it's in an account someplace. Can we accrue money into that account every time?
Oh, why we couldn't?
Well, I think it currently is. If it's dedicated fund.
Is it our account? Is it in charter's account?
No, it's the town's account, but it's dedicated for one purpose only.
Okay.
We can't spend it, other than...
You can't plow roads with it or anything like that.
No, no.
But I believe in years past, some of that money went through to the general funds.
How do we do that?
Create a bookkeeping, I guess.
How many people actually belong with East Hampton?
How many people?
How many towns, excuse me?
Just one. Just East Hampton.
Okay. And I still have Whitebrook Middle School?
We're still at Whitebrook Middle School.
Any questions? Any further questions? Jackie?
No, I think it's a great idea, and I actually moved to sign this contract. It'll benefit the... Well, you know, I think it'll benefit the citizens, so they'll understand more about what we're doing, and they can watch some meetings, and they can make their own videos. I think it'll help.
But they can do that already.
Right, but they can put it on Channel 5 and go to...
They can do that already. You can walk into Whitebrook Middle School right now and do it right now.
Right, but I'm saying...
You don't have to without paying another 10 grand. You could do that right now.
Right, but I'm saying in our town, citizens here could do this. You could utilize this. Right, but we have the money. It's here.
But you don't have to spend the 10 grand to do that part of it. We went through this five years ago, six years ago, and there was another guy running it. We went over there and talked to him, so... Anyone can go down there and use it. It's public access.
Right.
So that 10 grand doesn't...
Excuse me, you're not entirely accurate. The fact that we will honor Southampton's citizens and that we will let them come in and produce shows doesn't mean that we have to. We don't have to.
This is what I was told by the guy over there who was running it before.
Well, I'm running it now, so...
So it's a change in...
I mean, we've changed a lot of policies in the last three years.
Well, you could sign out equipment if you wanted to use it before in the past. You could sign up equipment that others run it before. So you could come over anytime you wanted to, any citizens available at that time.
Yeah.
Could go over and use it, so you didn't have to pay the 10 grand more.
Right.
To do that. And then so the other thing is, by buying 10 grand, by paying $10,000 more, is there really a need? I mean, do we have people knocking down our doors?
How long a contract is this for?
Two years.
Two years. So this is a two-year contract.
Short term, you can try us out. You don't like us, two years, don't renew it.
We've got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I have a question though, because I'm on the Cable Access Board in Northampton and is doing a lot of wonderful things for Northampton. So the people who work for NCTV, that's the one in Northampton, they actually go out and film a lot of things. So it's not just volunteers. So I believe that you were gonna have some staff also filming.
Right. That person... That person would then outreach to the council.
So you don't have to only depend on volunteers. For instance, when I worked at the library in East Hampton, Cable Access did a lot for us. They filmed a lot of events. We even had a bedtime story hour, which was... And they also do PCA, so that's Public Service Announcements. And a lot of times, you can't depend on volunteers for everything. I know that from NCTV.
Well, I realize that. I'm just... I'm trying to imagine what the need is. Like, no one's calling the board of software and saying, "We want to... You know, we want this." We're not getting that same...
Well, I did this survey because I know what they can do, because when I looked at the East Hampton Library, they did do it for the library.
Did you talk to Edwards Library? Did you talk to them there?
I filled out the survey as director of that library. The survey that was on the county website.
Right, which is an excellent... Yeah.
Because I know what it can do. The public service announcements, for instance, if professionals doing it, if we have, for instance, mini-golf is coming up, they would do a little public service announcement and... Or anything we needed, you know, any kind of event coming up. And I know also you do church services for shut-ins.
We broadcast church services. We have a producer that does a really nice job with the Our Lady of the Valley church service. We have Christ United Methodist Church that we broadcast, we rebroadcast. I mean, we can sit here. I can... I wasn't under the impression that that was this kind of presentation. I can give a presentation of how wonderful cable access is and how it can enrich communities, on the one hand. On the other hand, we've sort of done that multiple times. I mean, what I'm hearing is that just because we do respect Southampton citizens and invite them to come in, doesn't mean we have to. So the argument I'm hearing from you is basically, why buy the cow when you can get the milk for free? Right? Is that correct?
Well, that's not exactly what I'm saying. I'm just saying, in past the station, again, go back five years or even more before we moved over here, I went over there to find out what they could do and what was available. And they said, "Whatever you want to do, you can come use it." It was like, so you're telling me that you've changed some of the policies at the Cable Access?
We've changed a number of policies since I've been the station manager for the last year and a half. And we could talk about that maybe at a different time, but I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
I just wanna know what I'm gonna pretend ran, that's all.
You're getting the ability to show things on television, which you don't have right now.
Yes, we do.
No, you don't. You don't...
We do. We're showing stuff on TV right now.
Right now, only this meeting. You can only show on television anything that comes out of this room and nothing else.
So you don't want any Southampton residents going over there at all?
That's not what I said. I mean, I'd love for Southampton residents to come over. We have some South residents that do come over. We had Southampton residents on our board, but we can't show any programs on Channel 5 in Southampton. We've done a number of programs for Southampton that we can't show in Southampton, because you have no way to do that. Like technically, physically no way to do that, so...
Mike, can I make a suggestion? I'd like to make a new motion. My motion would be that we try this for one year and evaluate it six months and 12 months and see if we're going forward with this for a second year.
All right. That would require Jackie to withdraw her motion.
Withdraw my motion.
I would second that. I just don't wanna... I mean, money is tight, and I know we can't spend it yet, but it's 10 grand. 10 grand's money. So I just wanna make sure we're actually getting something, instead of just signing a piece of paper and you guys just walk away back over to Whitebrook Middle School and we never see you again.
All right.
I mean, I think there needs to be outreach going towards all the... You know, the last couple, whatever else is going on, that the service is there.
That's what the Southampton coordinator would do. And just to reiterate, we've actually done a number of things to generate goodwill with the town of Southampton. For example, the computer that hosts your community calendar, you guys don't actually own. We gave it to you to use for the last two years. I mean, all this stuff over here, you guys didn't buy. We didn't want the town to have to spend money on that.
But that was before you were manager. That was the other guy.
Well, but I was a part of that choice. I was still staff at the station. The fact that I got a promotion doesn't change our attitude towards Southampton in any way. We've always tried to incorporate Southampton into what we're doing, because you guys have more limited resources. So it makes sense, at least it makes sense to me, to pool our resources together and give you guys the best that we can give you.
So if I can summarize what we're changing... What the motion is, is to vote a one-year contract instead of a two-year contract.
A one-year contract with a six-month review, see how we're going, and a 12-month review before we extend it.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the station? I'm concerned with the people. Is that acceptable to ECAT?
It's acceptable to me, yeah. Anything that gets the ball rolling is great.
And then that's your second to your... The motion, David?
Yeah, that's fine. I just want we can track how many actually...
All right.
What the increased usage is actually for the town for the 10 grand.
All right. So we got a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion?
Donna had a question. Did you have one?
No, I just had a comment, but I'm fine.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we... Will you redraft or make the correction to that contract and send it over, or do we have one here?
I can. And actually, I just wanted to, just as a point of order, it's not... It's a proposal that I'm submitting, not a contract.
Our proposal, okay.
I just don't want you to think that now you're legally bound to something that you're not legally bound to.
No. That's fine.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Appreciate you coming over.
Kathy, when you get a chance, could you talk to Charlie McDonald Conservation, because he would like to have his meetings televised once we get this started?
Okay. So start date, we'll need to talk about that. Should I just call Reggie and work that out?
Fine.
All right. I'm gonna call for open time for the public, anybody?
I just wanted to let you know that we are working on the... I'm sure Reggie's updated you about the server issue, but, you know, hopefully payroll is gonna go out on Thursday. Direct deposits are gonna be a day late, because the deadline is tomorrow at noon, and there's no way we're gonna have the server running and everything entered by then.
Do we have a way of making an announcement to the employees so they know?
I think Donna said they were...
Well, I guess we're just gonna call the firemen, call the schools. Schools already called and wired their checks early because they're anticipating a snow day on Thursday, so that that's not gonna happen. And it is, we're gonna be working late tomorrow night, you know, once the... Once everything gets up and going to get this in. And hopefully there's no glitches tomorrow and they're able to get, you know...
Right. Just to bring... I don't know, is the board aware of what's going on? I only found out when I...
They sent an email yesterday.
What I mean about the replacement?
Oh, no.
Okay, why don't you...
I'd like to know more about that.
Why don't you...
The IBS is lending us a loner, a server loner, and they're gonna install it tomorrow at 10:00. It's gonna take four hours. By then, everybody should be up and running. So their goal is to process here.
Hopefully.
What's the backup plan? Usually when you upgrade, you crash, so what's the backup?
Well, it's not an upgrade. It's our act...
Well, you do a change like that, what's the backup plan, so they can pay it?
Backup plan is we'll be here signing checks.
And whatever the back... You have to have a backup plan.
Well, the only other... The only other backup plan, because we have no access to the program and data without the server, is to process, what, 170 payroll checks manually and all the deductions.
How long would that take?
That would take quite a while.
Could you do it in a day?
No.
You know...
You'd be lucky to get it done in two days.
It would be an awful lot of work and an awful lot of error.
I just, you know, knowing software and technical issues, sometimes it doesn't... It takes more than this.
You know, we're doing the best we can.
I know you are.
The other option was to try and get the directory for my... This program off of the hard drive and load it into my one computer, so it could run on one computer in my office, so we could get this stuff in and print it.
Why don't you do that at the same time, because I just need to...
Can't, because you're running it live, and you can't have... You can't do that. Anyway, there were issues with IBS doing that.
They had their concerns, yep.
Best hope.
Loading that directory on standalone, and so this would be the option was to get the loner server and get everybody up and going. I mean, we have, you know, we have no email, we have no documents, we have no programs. We've had nothing since we came in.
Have we lost information? Anybody know?
No.
It's all there.
It's all in the back. They're doing a mirror image.
Hopefully, you know, they're saying it's all there, so hopefully.
So my concern is obviously inconvenience. Anybody's paying a mortgage and whatnot based on the check to check.
Exactly.
But what is our legal ramifications if we don't pay people all the time? Isn't there... Are we sort of obligated to get the money out?
Well, my concern are people who have direct deposits and they have automatic payoffs those days.
So we're gonna let people go tomorrow.
We might open ourselves. We need to talk... The department heads need to be informed, so they talk to every single employee they have. It's an important thing, that they're not gonna get the checks Thursday at 8:30 in the morning, direct deposit. They have to make sure. If they're gonna have some other money rebadled out of department, are they checking automatically, are they gonna make arrangements?
The other thing that we can do is we can not do any direct deposits. I'm not gonna pick and choose when we have, you know, 70 people or whatever that get direct deposits. I'm not gonna go through and say, "Do you want this direct deposit this week or not?" So we either do it the way we normally do it, and the people that get manual checks, get those, and the people that get direct deposit, get those, and, you know, barring any... Anything else happening, those direct deposits will be in the banks on Friday morning. Or we can do no direct deposits and we can cut all paper checks. But the checks are still dated on Thursday, and a lot of people aren't gonna be able to get... Pick them up and get them to the bank any sooner than they would be deposited on Friday morning.
And Monday's a holiday, right?
Yes, Monday's a holiday.
So because of that, I'm thinking that we'll just go with a direct deposit rather than to keep it the same so that people aren't saying, "Oh, why am I getting this check? Now I have to get it to the bank and blah, blah, blah." We'll just let everyone know that direct deposits will be effective on Friday instead of Thursday.
That's the important thing. So people know that if there is... They can call their bank and make arrangements for the one day.
Right. If they've already gone in and pre-set up, you know, paying bills to be paid for Thursday, thinking that the money's gonna be there, then...
They've gotta tell their bank that there's a problem.
Right.
I think that's all we can do right now. And then the next issue is the purchase of a new server.
We're in the process of seeking quotes for a server and service two separate.
I thought we had Wally Computer, somebody who's our maintenance...
Not for a while.
We haven't had them since they did the Norris School.
Excuse me?
Since they did the Norris School, they haven't been around.
Well, we had... We did have a maintenance contract on the server. There was a line item in the past.
I don't know if that was Wally.
No, but it was somebody. We did have a maintenance person when Diana was here. Isn't that gonna remember who that was?
Jason Turkop.
What happened to this?
Changed over to IBS when we moved over here.
And was there a maintenance contact, contract in that?
We do not have a maintenance contract with either or.
Which wouldn't matter anyway, because this is a crash. This isn't...
We need to...
This isn't a software problem. This is a crash.
Did anybody know if this was coming?
Mm-hmm. We all knew. Everybody knew. Did we know it was gonna happen Monday? No.
No, but when did we know that this was gonna happen?
I don't think... Well, I mean, we'd expect it because of the age, I think is what you're saying. I don't think anybody had it down on a calendar.
No.
No, I mean, if we know it was gonna be a problem, we should have had some kind of a action going on. But on the other hand, too, is this temporary server, does the fee in place for that?
There's a $25...
How much?
$25 a day. Actually, looking at the quote... Looking at the... Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And our new server, is it gonna be the same server? Is it gonna be upgraded to...
It's gonna be upgraded. They're no longer making a 2003 Microsoft server, so we're doing a 2012. Everything's gonna be upgraded.
2012 with what kind of capacity? Same capacity, more memory?
More, more.
How much more? I mean, I'm just curious.
I've got that in front of me, and I don't know.
But I mean, is there a set of specifications that we're gonna be working off of? But, I mean, is there a set of specifications that we're gonna be working off of?
I went off the recommendations from IBS.
Can we get the old one fixed as a backup? Keep it in the basement with that?
Two thousand and three.
What, you have a crash?
Not only that, in effective, I think it's either March or April, there are patches, the security patches that go out to everybody's computers, they're no longer doing that, so, no, we can't.
The other, the other thing here is that we have a backup, as, as I understand what you're saying, is there's a backup to these. So, we haven't lost anything technically, I mean.
That we know of.
That we know of.
Can I ask a question? Is, and I, the only reason I know of this question I'm gonna ask you is I heard recently another municipality had a problem with stuff that was deleted, and they had a server in their town hall, and they also had a server to that server somewhere in Vermont. Is that such a thing that we should be considering?
That's offsite.
We should do offsite, correct. We do not do offsite.
That's what my company does, is offsite and everything gets downloaded to an offsite place, so if it was a disaster here.
Correct, that's the next step. Right now, we're focusing.
We don't have that, though.
No, we don't. But the first step is to get a server.
I think because of the situation, we should incorporate that in the permanent solution.
And that was the same as going to the cloud.
I know, but I just wanna make sure we're, we're moving ahead with this.
We are, step by step.
And this is gonna go out to bid because of a.
I already started.
Does MMA offer any assistance in this?
I didn't seek their help.
Didn't they have a IT program recently?
Pioneer Valley Planning, do they have an IT program?
No, I'm talking about CAG.
HCO.
With IT service, yeah.
I don't know. I remember they were just doing something with Cloud, I think he talked about it last time I was here.
So, doesn't Pioneer Valley?
What's the value of the new server and the backup?
I'm sorry?
What's the value, dollar value?
I don't wanna say, 'cause I'm seeking quotes right now. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, or.
Roughly speaking.
Well, ballpark.
Ballpark.
Five thousand under.
There's no free cash outside.
We have it, we have it lined, we already had a budget. That was the project that was in for this year, FY fourteen, was to replace the server. So, there are funds in that line item, and there are funds in there for.
Okay, 'cause that answers the question I had before. You had money in there for a new server.
Correct, I anticipated this, correct. I didn't anticipate it for money.
I just wanna make sure, if we have to go out to bid, we go out to bid to everybody. Okay? Everybody, all right? Anything else, Donna?
You can let us know.
Best of luck.
I guess I can, I can send you an email, what my emails were.
Yeah, we'll know that.
Well, I mean, I'll be around this weekend and, and Monday if you need somebody with stamps or something, I'm here.
I'm sure I'll probably be dead by then if people don't have their checks.
Thank you, Donna.
Good luck.
Anything else for the public? All right, um, this still hasn't come down.
Oh, do you want me to go grab it?
Yeah, let's go grab this, and then, Joe's here, Wayne Randall's here, we held it till you got here for Randall's. Um, did you get, I got an email.
Yeah, yeah.
They have that. Randall's here, in the back. Randall, why don't you come on up? Joe, why don't you come up and, this is on Randall's conflict of interest form, signing the signature form, signature and vote. Joe, why don't you lay it out for us?
Sure, so, just to give you the nutshell version, essentially, with the conflict of interest law, when an individual has two contracts with the town, and that, the way that you find out in the conflict of interest law is pretty general, doesn't mean a liberal contract, any employment relationship, or even if it's an uncompensated position or an appointed position to a board, you can't hold more than one position with the town unless there's certain exemptions that apply. So, for this particular situation, my understanding is, he currently holds a position, an uncompensated position on the conservation commission, and then the highway superintendent position. So, for, just to hold those two positions simultaneously, there would be an exemption that is needed for the conservation commission position essentially. What you could do in that case is designate the conservation commission, and it's the office, not the individuals. So, you then, you would have to designate the conservation commission as special municipal employees. If you were to do that, that would allow him to hold both positions simultaneously. Still have to make a, there's a declaration that you just have to make, employee would make.
So, you'd have. But, that's, yeah, is that one of the boards that's on that list?
I believe so.
So, we've already done it?
Okay, that's what we weren't sure of at the time that we rendered the opinion we didn't have whether or not they.
I think it was done since nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, so they're already special municipal employees, so that takes care of that component of it. So, then the second component becomes a situation if, if there's a financial interest in a matter that comes before the town of employee or family member. So, in this case, in order, the board basically has three options, it's discretionary. So, when the disclosure is made, now, at this point in time, the board could either give a blanket exemption, and there's a, within the materials, I believe, in the opinion it talks about, the, there's a form that you would sign off on. But, the, a blanket exemption, which would essentially mean that whenever one of these matters comes up involving his wife, the board is essentially given its approval in advance and has made a determination that would continue for each subsequent event that takes place, or each subsequent, I guess, project or, or action that comes before him as highway superintendent. That'd be option one. Option two would be you could take him on a case-by-case basis, so that whenever there's a project, so if there's a particular project that's before him, that's requiring some action by him that his wife is involved in, that would come back before the board, before takes any action, discloses what it is and what the interest is, and then the board could vote to approve that particular project, you know, the exemption for that project, which would then allow him to act on it. The third option, which would be to just deny the request for an exemption, which would essentially mean that any of those matters involving his wife where there's a direct financial interest, he wouldn't be able to act on it. So, it's essentially the three options on, on that piece.
Is the board, we give the exemption, and take this the wrong way, I'm not saying she would, but say there was some illegal maneuvering or something, it's not illegal on her part, are we held responsible for giving her that special exemption, that we plan to involve or anything like that?
Well, well, here's the thing, you're not, the exemption.
We're not liable, we're not liable, right, of reasons that may occur or anything.
No, no, well, and bear in mind that the exemption is to, to the employee. So, the exemption is to, the wife, at this, his wife at this point doesn't really, that's not sort of the issue with this particular exemption, it's, it's whether or not the employee is going to be able to take official action as a highway superintendent on some matter that his wife is involved in, because she may have a direct financial interest. So, at that point in time, if you're giving an exemption, you're more or less saying, in, in the language of the statute on the front of me, but it's that you're essentially finding that the interest that he's disclosing is not so substantial that would affect the integrity of the office that he's holding. And so that, you know, that the public would come to expect that he's gonna act with a certain amount of integrity in performing his official duties. That's essentially what you're saying when you're allowing that exemption, that that particular financial interest isn't so great. On a blanket basis, obviously, you're sort of doing it on a going-forward basis and making a more generalized statement that whatever his wife may be involved in, it's not so substantial. Conversely, if you did have concerns about a particular situation, you could always just do it on a case-by-case basis, and that way, each time it comes up, you would have the opportunity to determine at that point, you know, well, what is the interest? What is the project? You know, what's the involvement? And then, you know, you could lay your concerns that way. But I don't see it as a liability issue.
We're not liable if there's some.
No, you're granting exemption, there's still an obligation on the part of, well, I guess both employee and his wife, they're gonna operate in accordance with, you know, the laws and not perpetuating frauds and things like that.
I'd be more, you know, inclined to go by the individual.
Case by case.
Case by case.
I think that makes, provides the biggest opportunity.
And it gives it for the public, you're right, the public will then sort of, just like go ahead, it's like bring it up to us. And the makeup of the board changes, so then different opinions around the board and whether they're comfortable.
I, that's, when I was talking to Joe earlier, that's the way I felt the most comfortable with it. This gives the most transparency and the least opportunity for anybody to complain about the process if it's out there every time.
Basically.
So.
But you are still designating a special town employee as highway superintendent, according to, to maybe five of us, and, and also conservation.
Yeah, I think I covered under that.
A large list of.
I have that twenty-C disclosure of a special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract. I filled out that one, and then the determination is disclosure by a non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority, which is you guys.
And that's that form nineteen, section nineteen form that we, that we've got in front of us.
And I forgot to fill out one of the boxes on the form you have in front of you. It's this one here, and I also, you, you guys are supposed to keep one copy, and I'm supposed to keep a copy to file, so I've made two copies. I filled in this box here, and only just cleaned up the language in those. If you'd like to compare them, feel free.
No, no, I'm just, just so Joe knows what we're. Like to have his say that it's okay to sign.
Well, you should look at the ones that I cleaned up then. I didn't fill out the boxes.
Let's shred this one before it gets mixed in with the pile. I'm gonna get this up, so we don't mix it.
So, do you need a motion, Michael?
Well, let's have Joe take a quick look at that and make sure we're okay.
I'm telling you, good conversation. Good communication.
I get two options on there, so you probably have to just put, there's space on the second page where you can write in special instructions that you'd like me to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Do you wanna take more time to look at those, Joe, or?
Um, well, am I looking at the same? This is too crowded to look.
Yeah, that's, I need, they, you're supposed to keep a copy and I'm supposed.
There's only one form that we're signing, is that okay?
Yes.
It's on the front seat of my car, would you like me to go get it?
No, no, as long as you're convinced, I've locked, oh, here it is.
I read it twice.
What's that?
The background check.
Background check, so it's okay. So, we have the contract here. But I wanted, I wanted you to be here to say you've got it and it's okay.
I have it, I got it, I saw her.
Is that the other?
Yeah.
Is it?
There is also, should also be a section twenty.
I'm sorry, I ripped up the wrong part.
I have this one, but I think you just have to file that. I don't know if there's a signature.
Well, we're, you're already a, you've already designated special municipal employee, right?
Yes.
For the.
Well, conservation commission, name of the superintendent, to my knowledge, we're both on the list of special municipal employees.
Yeah, the superintendent one, we. Fine. So, I guess the, it, the question then becomes, and it's a matter of how you want to, in the determination by appointing official, there is, I guess, ultimately, for section nineteen, it's he can't participate in a particular matter because of a financial interest. So, is there anything pending currently that he would be participating, that you would be participating in?
Yes.
And is that, is that, you know.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's disclosed, um, right here.
The Pleasant Meadows subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, so, I guess if the, if, if I understand what the board, at least the consensus anyway of the board, is that you'd be looking at doing this on a case-by-case basis, then really all we're really talking about tonight would be the Pleasant Meadows subdivision, and you'd be granting the, making the determination as it relates to the Pleasant Meadows subdivision. And now, that's within it, I don't know, you know, there may be multiple particular matter, multiple matters that he has to act on with it, so you need to decide whether we're saying for anything that comes under Pleasant Meadow, or if there's specific things.
So, am I understanding the process that every time this, you would be bringing this form kind of sort of into us every time there's this, so this is Pleasant Meadows, and the next one, Ocean View, and so another, same form comes in for Ocean View?
Yes, that, well, if that's what the board's decision is, I mean, that's, that's up to you folks.
I would do that.
So, let's take a motion clearly. What does the board decide, wanna decide is the procedure that's to be followed by Randall when he runs into a conflict of interest with his, that's with the wife.
Then he brings the form in each time.
And so, that a motion?
Yes, sir.
That's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So, clearly, from here on in, anytime there's a potential for conflict between you and your wife, you're to bring one of these in, disclosing it to us.
Sure. And so, the next question would be then, we're dealing right now with Pleasant Meadow, and whether or not that is all of Pleasant Meadow and the actions that he may need to take as, you know, in connection with that development, or is there within the, the project itself, certain unique, that's to you again?
Do we have the right to, and this is good attorney-client kind of privilege, but his wife being an attorney, do we have the right to ask his, the nature of his conflict would be in what she's got invested in that project, what, and I don't know what she's doing over there, other than she's representing, I think, the developer, I don't know how far she's representing it, but it's gonna require a disclosure on his part of that kind of relationship, isn't it?
Well, I think that's what he's disclosing by this. I, I, I think, and I don't know if we've had any conversations with the Ethics Commission, but, you know, the concern that they typically would have in a situation like this is that his wife is employed by somebody who has projects going, and depending upon decisions that are made by the town relative to whether they're looking for special permits, whether they're looking for approval of subdivisions, or, you know, whatever, there are any number of things that they could be looking for approval from. If any of them fall to the responsibility of the highway superintendent, so, let's say the roadway, and, and looking at, you know, width of the roads, or, or giving whatever approvals you might need to give as the highway superintendent in that situation, his wife would have a financial interest in theory because depending.
I guess that gets too crazy, because if for some reason we don't catch every single one of those, then someone will say, well, you didn't get that special for that, so I'll be more inclined to say a blanket for each, each thing. Does that make sense, Michael? Because otherwise, we miss something.
I, it's.
Somebody says, didn't, you know, cover the sidewalk, or the curb cut, or something like that.
Right, and so what they're saying, what Ethics would say, and, you know, Mr. Kemp can correct me if they've told him something differently, but his wife has a financial interest because however those projects may go is whether or not she continues to be doing work with that particular developer, and it may mean she has more work or less work, and so that's where the financial interest comes. It's not like she has a financial interest in, you know, selling one of those lots, it's, it's more her relationship to developer, but she's getting paid by the developer to represent it in this as it goes through, and one could say that how well she does and how well the project does may indicate how, whether or not she is continued to be retained, I guess. So, that's where the financial interest would, would come into play, and that's presumably what Ethics has indicated. But you're right, if you break it down into its very individual subparts, that may become a little bit too cumbersome, so maybe a decent balance as you do it on a project-by-project basis as opposed to a discrete event within a project.
And I, I'm lost, I haven't been over there in a while. How far are they in that project?
Not very far, I think the plan has been developed and they're.
So, so you've got all the roadways and utilities and all that still has to be done?
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are, those are all set in cast and stone.
No, no, deviation from that.
But his inspections are.
His inspections.
Which can be, and I'm not just saying, that can be, if something's done improperly and he waves it inspection or waves it through, that could be a bigger breach than anything else. And I'm not saying that's what's happening, but I'm just saying that's why, if you wanna make it on a project-wide basis or not, you know, that's what you're doing.
But, I mean, he's, so his waiver doesn't waive his right to do his job the right way?
No, it doesn't, he's still under an obligation to perform.
So, if he screws up where he puts the drainage, and there's an issue and we get sued, he's.
Well, in that issue, he's a town employee, I would think. The, the conflict is gonna be if he does it because his wife has a financial interest in it, and it would cost her or the project, that's where the conflict arises.
I still say you like project by project, otherwise.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So, the final thing would be that we're, we're doing project by project, so it's, this is more of a specific approval of Pleasant, of his role at Pleasant Meadow, or, as that project comes.
You may, you may wanna just fill out one of those copies then if there's gonna be specific instructions.
I signed one, why don't I, I'll sign both of them, I'll give them to Reggie, and we'll type in the missing language.
Reggie, can you keep a file for Mr. Kemp separately for, for things like this? Don't, like, don't bury that into Pleasant Meadow.
I guess there's three of them, right?
Oh, three, just the one I have to file with the town clerk.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, should be, but I would suggest a specific motion for Pleasant Meadow. I mean, you've given sort of a policy direction of the board.
I made a motion to approve the project on Pleasant Meadow in its entirety.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to make everybody wait. And Joe, we gotta take one, care of one more piece of business. We have the long-awaited contract from the town administrator, Heather, and I can never say.
Budrev. Budrevitz.
Budrevitz. I'm having trouble with that for a while.
That's how she says it.
I spoke to her last week, because we were having some technical problems getting the contract to her, and we got him, we got it to her, she signed it. What's the board's pleasure with regard to our signing of the contract?
Make a motion to assign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion before I call? All in favor? Call one more time for open time for the public, because we're going into executive session, we're going in twice, on two different occasions, and we, after close of the executive session, we will not be coming into open session again.
This might be a good time for me to write my second issue.
Oh, it might be.
It's been a long winter, and my, my winter roads budget-
Let me guess, we have to declare an emergency?
Yep.
Seems like we've done this about 12 times in the past.
No, you probably have done-
Well, I meant nine, I'm sorry, nine times.
I think we did it 28 times.
Nine times, and I've done it.
Do you have to make a motion for that?
You have to make a motion to declare winter emergen, or emerg- What's the right wording?
Emergency. I make a motion to declare a state of emergency in regards to winter road activities.
Which, which allows him to spend in the deficit.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And what, Thursday comes again?
I guess we can plow now.
We can plow now.
Mike, I want to talk about HCOG. I want to talk about HCOG.
You want to talk about H, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that on the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, we got two more things to try and do. Oh, my gosh.
I have a question, actually. Okay.
Just go, just go, go plow the, sleep tonight, because I think tomorrow night you're not going to-
I think you're right.
Yes.
Here we go, sir.
Everybody got it?
Yes.
All right, so this, she only sent us one original? So-
IR Jones unique.
No, one's fine, but I'm just saying, we'll copy, copy it, send her back.
When we have email?
Well, you're going to send an email? Oh, I'm back, I would put a stamp on it.
Oh, I think she would want it, electronic copy.
Well, if you want to do it both ways, send it both ways.
All right, Jackie, you're up.
What she started, about there?
March 3rd.
March 3rd, first Monday in March.
Okay, as I stated before, I have looked at the Hampshire Council of Governments' quarterly savings summary on our electrical municipal accounts, and I found in 2013, some of these months were extremely high, for instance, January, February, and March. In January, it was an extra $528.57, in February, it was $822.72. In March of 2013, it was $4,076.64, with a grand total for that quarter, $5,427.93 extra on the aggregation program. So, I talked to Jeff at Hampshire Council of Governments, and he's looked up the rates for January and February, and they're extremely high, and he's recommending that right now we drop the aggregation for a few months until the rates stabilize, because right now, we're on real-time, but he said we can have a fixed rate for two years if we sign the contract. So, if we leave the aggregation in place right now, we're in jeopardy of having our rates extremely high for the next two months.
This is the aggregation for the town council, not, not-
Municipal accounts.
Not the program they're, they were trying-
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's at the attorney's office right now, for the residential. This is municipal, and so, I mean, he's recommending himself that we get off the aggregation right now, and I talked to Buckland, Mass., and they have, they had HCOG, and they have gotten off of it right now, too, because the rates are so volatile, and so, I'm trying to save the town some money by getting off the aggregation for the municipal at this point.
There's no guarantee people save money, is there? The rates people up outside of the HCOG, right?
I guess the point is they're lower right now.
At the moment.
At the moment.
But they could fluctuate.
But what were they for the other three quarters, Jackie?
Well, the other three quarters, the last three quarters of 2013, we saved, I think it was $513, but right now, January, February, March are really volatile times, because you know, supply and demand, the heat, it's colder, it's going to be more expensive, so these three, next three months, could be four, are going to be really high. But that's not to say we can't get back on it, because they did in 2012, according to the reports, I pulled up 2012, they saved us a lot of money, but right now, they're not.
Why is that? I don't understand, I mean, they're supposed to be getting the best-
Right.
Best, I don't understand why, do they explain why they're more expensive?
Well, they're saying it's harder to get the gas, and the rates are just more expensive, and, you know, they add, they have an adder, their percentage that they take, and that has gone up, so it's just more expensive, and we, it would just be a better idea.
What is the rate if we get out of the aggregate? Compared to what it is in, what is that rate?
We will default back to the Western Mass, yeah, electrics rate.
And what's, what's the difference between the two? That, that's something I would need to know.
Well, that's, that's in these, in these reports, I can tell you right now. You see this right here is the usage, how much we use, okay, and then the average cost of kilowatts and adder, okay? So, those are the rates. And you see in March how much higher that is? So, you multiply-
So much higher than what?
Excuse me, so you multiply that by this, and you get this number, you see?
And that's if we are with the aggregate?
If we go back-
So, if we go to national grid, we'll actually say the same compared to HCOG?
But we're not a national grid base.
No, we're not national, that's just an example. It's WMECO. If we go back, we'll pay the market rate right now.
And what is that compared to this?
This right now is a report for, you know, January, February, March. So, right now, it is 12.2, and it's going to go to 16.2 in March.
How does that associate with any of these numbers? What should I look at?
Because, because this rate right here, this is the usage, this is what the town has used, okay? That's the rate. So, then you multiply this, this is HCOG's rate.
Okay, what's Western Mass electrics rate?
Uh, electric.
Well, we don't have that on here.
It's broken up.
Every so we can look at it.
This right here is what, HCOG.
You can.
This rate is close to what Western Mass electric was, but there is, or was that one. But then they add, they have an adder. Like their percentage that they make for doing this.
I get that.
So, so last year, whatever their rate was, whatever WMECO was-
Would be the next one.
Did you see how it has substantially, how much higher that is here than it is here?
I do, but I guess my thought is it's the winter, and that's just kind of what happens.
I know, but-
When it gets warmer, the rates kind of drop, and that's just how it goes.
Oh, we won't see water.
There's no guarantee that it's going to be lower.
But we don't need to pay extra on top of what we'd already have to pay.
From their utilities.
Well, according to Jeff at HCOG, he said if we call Western Mass electric ourselves, it'll be, go back to the default rate, Western Mass electric rate, in two and a half weeks, but if they do it, it takes a lot longer.
What's the default rate?
Whatever the rate is right now.
Whatever the rate is right now.
Isn't that important to know?
And it's, it's, yeah, it's substantial, it's substantial, a lot more.
We have a warrant, we have a warrant, be in there.
We have no, we had no computers, so no warrants.
So, we had a copy to look at.
I guess I, I guess at this point, I have too many questions about what it's going to be.
So, why don't we find out some more information about what it's going to be?
Before I can make any kind of decision.
Can we do that, Jackie?
Yeah, he, he said like 10.2 and then 12.2 for March.
Why don't you see if we can come up with a number, and then we'll talk about it, and put it on the agenda for-
Yeah, but sooner we do it, the less money we're going to have to pay.
Is the agenda light for next time?
I, I didn't get a chance to do it.
All right, so we'll try and put it on the agenda for next time. I told somebody to come in next week, oh, Charlie, can you?
Yeah, they're at at 6:30, in historic, I think that's what it is.
Charlie's, Charlie's got a presentation to make from the land.
Oh, yeah.
So, we didn't have it on the agenda this week, so I asked him to come in next week.
All right.
All right. Sir, anything that you need us for, because we're about to go into executive session, and we'll be coming back out.
Mike, I got one question on Reggie's draft here.
Draft budget, I didn't do it.
Oh, I do have a question about the HCOG. So, I was up, I'm sorry, when we were upstairs in the finance committee, and we were talking to the library trustees, and they get a bill from the HCOG every month, or a lot of them, and my question is, why did, why does each individual department get a bill? Why isn't there just one?
Because one's the supply and one's distribution.
Supply and distribution, thanks.
Oh, you're talking-
Supply is HCOG, distribution is Western Mass electric.
Okay, thank you.
Reggie, on your draft, the only thing I'm recommending is that the, Larry School, this past year, we did the windows, and we did the gutter cleaning ourselves. If you could take those out, move those down to your miscellaneous, it might be helpful for you.